We'll go ahead and get started tonight. It is Monday, September ninth, 2019, just a little bit after 5:30. This is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in each school building, the entrance doors at the Education Service Center, and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WBKV, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. Deb, can you confirm this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it was.
Great, thanks. Please stand for the pledge.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Kurt Rebholz and Erin Dove are excused absent tonight. In fact, Erin's kind of at a neat event. She represents some women on the board for the MAC Fund. And so she's at Women for the MAC Fund type of an event tonight. And so they both called and said they will not be here tonight, but we do recognize the quorum. And hopefully everybody has had a chance to look at our agenda. And with that, I will move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? None? Before we get started with our agenda tonight, we did have some sad news last week. One of our longtime teachers at McLean passed away after a long battle with cancer, Jody Kleibl. And as her husband and colleagues have told me, I didn't know Jody, but they all told me she never had kids of her own, but had hundreds and hundreds of kids in her kindergarten class, and referred to her kids as her kids and children, and touched a lot of lives and a lot of families. And so want to keep her and her husband and siblings and family in our thoughts and prayers. We also had another young man, student athlete of ours, who had a pretty major medical issue happen at a cross-country meet. He is recovering in the hospital, but want to keep him in our thoughts and prayers as well. So with that, we have public participation on the agenda tonight. Is there anybody wishing to address the board for public participation? Seeing none, we will move on to our consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have minutes of our August 12th regular board meeting, disbursements posted to September ninth, 2019, revenues and expenses in the aggregate through July 2019, ratification of an administrator contract, ratification of some teacher contracts, ratification of contracts for pupil transport employees, and a resignation.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? And the consent agenda passes. Our action items tonight are our September 29th annual meeting, the Head Start Program Information Report, and some fast-track policies that we'll go through. So we'll start with our annual meeting, agenda, and resolutions.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board, Superintendent Kirk.
Nancy's telling me I said September 29th.
Oh.
Annual meeting. It is September 23rd.
Twenty-third, yes.
Yep, just want to make sure we say that correctly.
Yes, we are. We're two weeks away.
The September 23rd, 2019 annual meeting.
Yeah, thank you so much. I have two objectives this evening. The first one, we have taken the discussion into consideration from two weeks ago, two weeks ago, I believe it was two weeks ago, and have presented as a part of the packet in the agenda, as well as on the backside, the four resolutions. We have updated the amounts, included names. If you wish to have any additional discussion, any questions for clarification, I'd be happy to assist. We are asking for a motion for that this evening. The second piece of this is, I just wanted to share a little bit because I included a couple formulas two weeks ago when we spoke. So how do we, first of all, calculate our revenue limit, which is a three-year average of our membership, which is all of those living within our boundaries, not necessarily in our schools, because we do have open enrollment out, which would be included, but not open enrollment in, but that's multiplied by the revenue limit per child. And so that is going up, and I have a revenue limit worksheet with me today. I just wanted to play with it a couple minutes, because then the second piece is, how do we receive our funding? Once we determine that large amount, it's primarily broken into state aid and property taxes. So I just wanted to share a little bit of this, and I'm going to just play with the resolution just a little bit. This I typically print on 11 by 17, but really what they do, and this is as of last week, it will be what we bring forward. I will be presenting information to our newspaper. It will be published this weekend, and then it will be published again within seven days prior to the 23rd. So that's Class 2A notice. We will be sharing all this information that's included tonight. Things will change before October, October 28th, I believe, Monday, the 28th. So that's when you formally set the levy, the mill rate, a final budget, all of that. But just a little bit of information. So again, typically on 11 by 17. So this is a little bit, a little bit funny today. But we, top left here, we have last year's information, which was 1819. We're now into 1920, which is what this indicates here. We have the last three-year average, which was 6,775 students. I now have included our new in the blue. The blue is what I have included in information. We had 125 FTE summer school. We only get to count 40% of that. That translates to 50 FTE. And then an estimate, and I'm going to play with this in just a second because I want to show you something, but 6,550 students, let me zoom over just a little bit, 6,550 students here anticipating that with a big asterisk, and I will share what I mean with that in a second. It gives us a new three-year average. And why that's important is because we're a declining enrollment district. We have been, we probably will be for some time. And because we're declining enrollment, what they allow is a one-year exception. It's an exemption or an exception, both of them actually. And they say, because you have a declining enrollment, you're allowed to keep really what you had last year. And so right now, this $882,700, they're essentially giving us a hold harmless, so we don't lose too much money too quickly. It's interesting. They don't give that to school districts that are increasing in enrollment. They say you have to suck that up a little bit, which you think, boy, they're educating more kids. Wouldn't you think they'd accelerate their funding? They don't, but they ease the burden of school districts with declining enrollment. But we did receive some information. Superintendent Kirkagard requested some information from our schools to say, hey, how many butts are in seats right now? What is our enrollment looking like in comparison to last year? So we think we have a pretty good apples-to-apples process procedure last week with a year ago, a week ago. And it looks like we're actually not just down about 75 to 100 students. We're actually down possibly 200, 240 children. Okay? So what implications does that have? So with this revenue limit worksheet, what I have right now is, I immediately went to that, and I said, what are the implications? What's going to happen to this year's revenue, 2019, 20? Even if I change this to 6,400, which would be a 223 student decrease, and you click enter, well, now that 880,000 translates to about $1.4 million. I'm going to go way off to the side here. We're still levied to our maximum amount, and if you guys can see my cursor, that didn't change 2019, 20's numbers, except it will impact 2020, 21, because this $1.4 million, or that 880,000, or whatever this one-time exception is, goes away. So it's a hold harmless that keeps us at last year's amount. We get it for the current year, and then it goes away. We've been declining enrollment each and every year, so we get that amount, and it goes away. We get a new amount, and it goes away. We get another amount each year, and then it goes away. So right off the bat, whatever that dollar amount is on an annual basis, I mean, literally right off the top, we know that we're going to have to be cutting approximately unless something changes. We're going to be cutting that amount for the following year's budget. So we're fine for 1920, but it's something to be very aware of as we roll into projections then for 2020, 21, and future years.
When you say a one-time.
Exception.
Exception, one time every year.
One time annually.
Yeah.
It's calculated annually. Now, next year, if we had increasing enrollment, and our three-year averages were flat, that amount would be zero. But if it was off by one student, that amount would be $9,700. So it keeps track of what that fluctuation is each year. If we had more students in our three-year average next year, if, I mean, if we had a boom, we had more students, it would still be zero. But it's calculated because we've been declining enrollment.
What was that number going into last year this time?
Yeah. I have that with me. I try to anticipate any questions that you guys might have. $733,000. So when you divide that out by the $9,700 that we're, $9,400 that we received, we, it was slowing down a little bit, but this year, again, based on some very preliminary numbers, it could be better than that. Again, it won't impact our 1920 numbers, but it will in the future.
This probably is a question for Don. Do we see the biggest decline at the elementary level, as in, you know, smaller classes or smaller numbers coming in, or where are we seeing that?
You know, for the most part, it was elementary. Across the board, every elementary school is down from last year. And Badger is very stable. They're about the same. Silverbrook is down a little bit. The high school is down, 100 and some students is, it's down as well. And so last, for this year, west is an east, or is a Class 1, east is a Class 2. Based on the initial projections, both of will be Class 2 next year. So that number is down. One of the key things in, you know, even though it might be $1.4 million, eventually that dollar amount is gone, okay? We're hoping sooner rather than later, because we don't want to continue to go south. Having said that, if, when we show and look at the final numbers, we have 400 students in elementary grade levels, okay? So if you combine all five schools together, there's 397 in kindergarten. There's 403 in fourth grade, or whatever the case might be. So they're all in the 400s. All of our high school classes are in the 500s, and this year, senior class is about 590, I believe, or 5. So if you take four years out, this is by far the largest high school that will have going forward for many years. And each year, our high school numbers will drop to the point where at some time, if you look at what we currently have enrolled in stu, in elementary, you're looking at 1,600 kids east-west total, as opposed to 22, 2,300 east-west total. And that's not 100% accurate, because we do pick up kids from parochial when they come into, to high school. I checked that out, and this year, it's about 50 students. So if I look at last year's eighth-grade class, and this year's ninth-grade class, it's 50 students higher than the eighth-grade class when they left. And so we can assume that those were parochial students coming in. We don't keep all of those 50 students every year. So it's not like at the end of four years, we have all 200 of those students in the system. We maybe have 100 of those students, or 125 of those students, or whatever the number might be. But most of them are elementary. They leveled off, so we didn't see a decline in the elementary kindergarten numbers, but we lost a larger fourth-grade class than we have kindergarten coming in.
So we take our three-year average, which is that left-hand side of that first page. I'm just going to scroll over a little bit. We then take that prior-year revenue limit multiplied by the three-year average, prior year's $9,400, which was our revenue limit per child. We now get to roll in what the new language for the biennial budget states. We do get to receive an extra $175 that's allowable. We would be considered, because there's a new threshold of $9,700, so we literally receive a full, pennies short of $300 per student. I've calculated all that in, but we're now up to $9,700. That's what I'd call the price floor, or the revenue limit floor. It's now pushing us up, just like it has been in the past. Calculates a new revenue limit. We then, as I mentioned, get to add in some exceptions. We have some transfer of services where we're now educating some special ed students that we previously haven't had to. We're allowed potentially, and we've just filed for that. The DPI will act on that by October 15th, but I'm guessing that we're going to be receiving about $100,000 of this transfer of service aid. This is that $1.3, $1.4 million of that declining enrollment exemption.
I have a question.
Yeah, please.
Does that go across us? Do we know yet what our choice out and choice in numbers are?
Do not, but that really has no impact on these numbers. These numbers that we're looking at, this isn't the final enrollment. This is just a comparison from September 5th, 2019, to September 4th, 2018, September 3rd, 2017. And so it truly is, the numbers that we have will be higher than that, but if they're open enrolled out, we'll get additional revenue, but we also pay the receiving district the lion's share of those dollars. And so we anticipate that total enrollment is going to be higher than that, but what I'm looking at, I tried to ask Jesse and Jones to give me an accurate comparison from this year to last year, and that's where we come in, come up with that 200-plus students.
Okay. Yeah, I know. We can't do anything about people having fewer kids, but just want to see if people are leaping us voluntarily. Okay, thanks.
I have, for budgeting purposes, again, not a part of the revenue limit calculation, but I have trended out open enrollment in and open enrollment out. We have been trending a little bit, and then as well, those dollar amounts. Since we are a negative, net-negative district for open enrollment, the amount is going up in both, open enrollment in is going up slightly, open enrollment out, a little bit more than that, but it does have a net-negative impact on our school district. So, again, negative declining enrollment exemption. We're allowed a prior-year adjustment of taxes that were paid, and again, that was provided by the DPI. I've estimated right now, this is our vouchers, so there are two formulas that go into that, but these are, again, fairly consistent with what was last year. Now, we did see a fairly large increase from 1718 to 1819. It almost doubled. How I like to view it is, that was some new students, some new families, some growth of that. Typically, now, what we, what I'm hoping we will see is, we've captured everybody K-12. There might be some graduating seniors, if it even goes as high as high school, but what we're going to be receiving then is new kindergartners, new 4K, if that falls into those schools that qualify for this. So this number, it may stabilize. We may see some growth again. We do get to levy for that. It's essentially, we're a flow-through. We levy and we pay. In fact, we never even see the money, so I shouldn't even say it's a flow-through. All they do is acknowledge it, that it's a revenue, and then they hold aid for that payment and make those payments to the schools that qualify.
Andy, I think last year, we had a significant increase. Went from like 400,000 to 800,000. Some of it was just some new families, but the lion's share of it was that there were several parochial schools that had chose not to participate in the past in the voucher system, and now they did. And so there are still several parochial schools who have chosen not to participate in that voucher system, and if they choose to, that would be the reason for a spike going down the road. Not, so the other ones are just going to be a gradual in, a gradual out, but if a school who wasn't participating before now chooses to participate, that can have a pretty significant increase in those numbers.
Thank you for that. And then as well, that does impact our levy, and as well, the mill rate. So if that number does go up, we can levy for it, has an impact on the mill rate. We have a decision of what to do with that. We do need to levy for that. That's a requirement. But that being said, we have other variables that can influence that. Essentially, then, general fund, we're going to be levying $31 million, because the state has also said, we're going to be giving you about 31.4. We would be levying about $31.1 million right now. That's pretty well set. We don't have much, that's levying to the maximum allowable limit. We can't levy more than that for our general fund. Levying $125,000 as a part of state aid and property taxes for exemption for computers, exempt property. Again, that's a dollar amount that comes from the Department of Revenue. It should be here by October 15th. Let's then start talking, and I apologize, I misspoke up here. We're actually levying 32.6, almost 32.7 million dollars for our property taxes. Okay? Fairly consistent with prior years. This is our Fund 38, which is our non-referendum. We'll be levying for our Fund 41, which is our, one of our capital funds that we have, 1.5, that has a 4% increase per the Board's request. We will be spending that full amount in 2019, 20. I'm going to skip over this next one. We are planning on levying $260,000 for our Fund 80. That's where we're going to be levying for anything outside of what I call the typical school day. So it's before-after-school programming, enrichment. It does include our police liaisons. We've had prior discussions about that, our school resource officers. They're now included in Fund 80. That's an allowable expense. We will be offering some services to parochial schools in the area. Little dollar amount for property tax charge back. What I've done here, and I did skip over one number, but what I've done is kept the mill rate at this point in time flat, at $7.97. Keep in mind that Resolution Number One, this coming Monday, does talk about the levy, doesn't get into mill rates, but what's going to be discussed on the 23rd will be keeping the mill rate flat with these numbers. You would be setting, that's advisory, you would be setting on October 28th, the final mill rate, the final levy. That can fluctuate. You say, Andy, levy a couple extra million? No, please don't defees something. We can do that. This is advisory on the 23rd. So I'm going to go back to that number I skipped over. We have, what, $2, $3 million, approximately $3 million of debt that we have to pay for referendum this coming year, principal and interest. I've actually done an additional approximately $3 million of defeasance. So that's included right now. Again, being fiscally responsible, trying to be proactive towards some of the issues that were brought up in the referendum. We're being proactive and seeing what we can afford within our limits, keeping the mill rate flat, but still paying off some of that debt. So approximately $3 million is there to defees, similar to what we did last year, in the prior couple of years. Okay? So this revenue limit worksheet, and I'll actually have a copy of that that we'll include in an insert for the 23rd, but I just wanted to show it to you. I don't know if you've seen this much before, and we can, in some, at some point in time, go over it in a little bit more detail, but I just kind of wanted to share a little bit of what goes into it, and how those formulas that we spoke about two weeks ago are calculated.
So Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you did not defees the $3 million, then the mill rate would have to go down, correct?
So I, and I truly brought this tonight, so I can say, hey, what if that was $3,250,000?
Which we do have to pay this year.
We have to.
Correct? Yep.
And the mill rate just went down to $7.38. So that $3 million, and again, we're about a $5 billion, $5.2 billion school district. So, yeah, that $3 million translate to about 70 cents, 60 cents.
If we, sorry, go ahead, Don.
I just, one additional reminder that we don't have the final numbers in yet, but we anticipate the district will have grown by about 7% from 2018 to 2018. So the assessed valuation of the district grew by, in that 7, 8% range, which is way higher than what we had anticipated. Last year, it was about 4, I believe.
Four and a half.
Four and a half. And so based on the initial numbers we have, and that's, they're not final yet, but those numbers show that the assessed valuation of the district grew significantly. So, so, yeah.
You know, will you know if that's because of growth of new neighborhoods, new homes, or is it because my home is worth more than it was a year prior?
I've reached out to some of our municipalities, and I'm hoping to have that information by the 23rd.
We will be able to get that, though?
I'm hoping to, yeah.
Great.
I just had a question about the debt defeasance. So if we would proceed with this, and I think you're proposing a $3 million defeasance, what would be the total defeesed at that point? How much, that would be added to, about how much, just out of curiosity?
I don't have that information handy. I believe, right now, without this $3 million, we're at about 5 and 1/2 million. So this would be, we'd be upwards of 8 and 1/2. Yeah, but I can confirm that if you'd like me to.
Be great, thank you.
I will certainly have that information for the 23rd.
Perfect, thanks.
And that, that money is in an interest-bearing account, and again, not callable now, but when the debt gets to 8.5 million, is that when it can be paid off?
Yeah, so great question. I did meet with Brian Brewer, which, you know, our representative from RW Barrett. I met with him last Tuesday. We do have some debt that is callable here within two years, where we could utilize the already defeased debt to pay that off, some of it off, and then refinance the rest. I don't know if you've heard, but interest rates have dropped quite a bit. They're projecting 100%, 100% chance that it's going to be dropping another quarter of a percent within the next couple of months. It would be a great time to be able to utilize that, whether, whether, whether it's to pay it off or to refinance the full amount. Our reinvestment amount typically follows that same curve, so I can't say that it's financially advantageous to either pay it off or let that continue in the interest-bearing account right now. Brian is working on that for us, to see if one is more profitable for us.
Just one other quick comment. When we had the referendum last year, we talked about the different, what, 3.75% interest would be, and we said, we're going to guess on that. We had strictly a guess. It might be 4, it might be 2 and 1/2, or 3 and 1/2. When I visited with Brian, I think he said Port Washington, when they issued their entire debt for their package, I want to say 2.8, okay? It was, for their 20-year package, it was less than 3. And so, so our numbers that we had anticipated last year, even though we were, we wanted to be conservative, we were even way more conservative than what we had anticipated. There was.
Were we estimating 4 and 1/4? We thought more realistically, it was going to be 3.75.
Yeah, I think that's what it is.
And yeah, I've heard 2 and 1/2 to 2.8, so all of those April referendums are, there's enough market out there that they're, they're getting gobbled up at an unbelievably incredible rate. And I think that market, it's projected to be there for a while yet. I don't think anything is going to turn around, so. So again, just a little bit of information. We've presented the agenda for both the budget meeting, budget hearing, as well as the annual meeting. Shared just a little bit of information in regards to the revenue limit and the forecast, and how we come up with some of these numbers that are included in the budget, and that'll be shared on the 23rd. Any other questions that I can answer for you tonight?
Again, on the 23rd, we're not setting a mill rate. We're setting the tax levy.
That's, that's, it's an advisory vote on the first Resolution Number One that talks about dollar amounts. It is not setting the mill rate, and even the levy is advisory. It's not binding. The other three are, but this one is not.
Will, what we vote on tonight for Resolution Number One, will those numbers potentially change by September?
No. I need to, by Wednesday, get information to the newspaper for our two publications, so they can print it this weekend, as well as then within seven days of the 23rd. So what's, what's being presented tonight is, is what it's going to be.
As I open my attachment, Resolution Number Three does not have the $2,500 and $2,600 amounts in the resolution?
Correct. And so what I was planning on is having the purple information below available that evening, noting what the current amounts are, and what was last changes, when it was last changed, which was in 1415. So those will be blanks. I don't want the Board essentially voting to approve the dollar amounts. I would advise that we leave those blank and let the vote that evening be filled in.
Is that how we've done it in the past?
That's what it was, no.
Would you, would you?
I would recommend that you, I would recommend that you put the purple at the bottom, just to let them know what's going on. But I would, if, if the Board is okay with keeping it at 25 and 26, I would put those numbers in. They can change it that night, but now, now it's not just a blank slate as to put in the, fill in the blanks. This is what our recommendation is, and then you have a little bit of a narrative at the bottom saying that it was last increase in 2013 or 14, or whatever it was. That's what I would recommend.
I agree with Don wholeheartedly. I don't necessarily want someone coming out of the audience to say, hey, I think it should be zero, or someone else coming out saying it should be 5 grand or something, so.
I'd be happy to.
And that kind of goes with what you did on Number One and on Number Four as well, so.
True. Okay, thank you. I'd be happy to include that.
I will move to approve the agenda for the September 23rd, 2019 budget hearing and annual meeting, and the four resolutions to be presented to the electors.
Second.
Second. All right, motion and a second. Why don't we take a quick peek at the agenda and make sure that we're all good with that? If there's any questions, or I just made a motion to approve it, but we can certainly make another motion if we need to change something here. But registration at 6 o'clock, the budget, public budget hearing, which is basically what Andy just did, right?
Mm-hmm.
And you'll be prepared for that.
A little bit more detail, yep.
At 6:30, and then if that will only last 10 minutes, you do kind of have to wait till 7 o'clock before you call the next meeting to order, which is the annual meeting. Nancy will call the meeting to order, say the pledge. Don, are you going to do the ground rules, or is Nancy going to do that, or?
Those don't matter to me.
And I don't even know what the ground rules are, but you guys will figure that out.
We can arm wrestle for it that night, sure.
Okay. And then, of course, you elect a chairperson, and like I've said before, this is not a board meeting. It's a meeting of the electorate. And so in the past, I know the Board has sat up on the stage. You don't You don't even have to do that if you don't want to. You could go sit in the crowd. Somebody will nominate someone, could be one of you. It could be a member of the public to be the chairperson. And then, you see what the rest of the items are there. And it's really just a report from Don and then the four resolutions we just talked about.
The only thing I'm not seeing on here, and someone, this is just going off memory, don't we have public comments somewhere? We allow for public comments. In the past, we have.
So, Deb, you help me out. I believe that public comments are after each one of the resolutions. And so, during those resolutions, you can take any comments you want. We'll set a three-minute timeframe for those public comments. When Resolution One is, when we've had all the public comments, then you vote on Resolution One, and then you have Resolution Two with the same public comments. And Deb, is that, I think that's the way it has been.
So, just like we're doing right now, there's a motion, there's a second, and then it's discussion on the motion.
So, it's during the discussion?
That's what it is.
Okay.
And anybody, and so, in a way, have those ground rules. Deb, I believe the public comments are only allowable for residents of the district. And so, if you're a non-resident in the district, you don't have the opportunity for public comments. So, you have to be a resident of the district and registered as a resident of the district before you're eligible for public comments.
And I feel like in prior years, but someone else, correct me if I'm wrong, that it wasn't three minutes. Is it not only two or is it four minutes? Like, there's a difference between our normal board meeting and what we allow at this meeting. So, just, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page and we know what we're doing and that Tim has the lovely clock so that someone else does not have to manage the time as they might be trying to listen to the comments.
So, last year we went with two. Some years you have gone with three. And that's totally board's decision. Two minutes doesn't really allow you much time to introduce yourself, where you live, your address, and go from there. And since we do three minutes here, I don't think we got lengthy last year. Nobody can go over three. You can comment twice if you would like to, but only after everybody else has commented. And so, that really is the board's decision as to whether you want two or three minutes. Seems like three is not an out-of-line amount of time.
I'm okay with three.
I'm fine with three. I just, I just want to know.
We'll have those set for you, but three is what we're recommending. And Tim will have the clock ready for us.
Between you calling the meeting to order and Don and the ground rules, that'll be something you'll have to announce to the crowd, you know what I mean? Before it all gets started, all those ground rules, so.
We do have a document, and that's been included as one of the ground rules.
In our agenda?
It has not been. We have that document that will be available. Yep, it will be read as, as...
Will we be able to review that prior to the meeting?
I think it's been the same document that's been used in the past. I'd be, I don't, we'll have to work together.
We'll make sure and get it out to you in advance.
Please.
Yep.
Any other questions on the agenda or the resolutions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? None? We've got our agenda and resolutions for our annual meeting. Those both passed. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Head Start program information report.
Now, the hard thinking is over. We get to the fun stuff.
All right.
Sorry, Andy. Typically, I'm up here with my colleagues, Matt Drenn and Emily Milstrm, but today was our first day of 4K and Head Start. So, they were exhausted, and it gave them permission to go home, so.
It is just me. The Head Start requires, let me get the phone. And yeah, a report about our performance and things that are part of the Head Start program. So, this is sent to Region Five, which is out of Chicago once a year at the end of August. And the items that are pertained in the PIR are much longer than what I'm providing in overview for you. So, this is just the major categories that we need to report are in, I apologize for all the letter As, but they're all equally important. There's enrollment and program operations, the program staff and qualifications, and the child and family services. So, some of the highlights were our program served one hundred and thirty-eight students throughout the year. A maximum would be one hundred and forty-one students. So, we're very close to that. Our program transitioned sixty of our four-year-olds to full-day program so that we are in alignment with the Head Start requirements. Previous to that, our four-year-olds and three-year-olds both attended half-days, and we have slowly transitioned all of our four-year-olds to full-day programming. And again, that's Monday through Thursday. So, that's our default. We did have some parents request that their students go half-day, and we will typically approve that if that is their request. So, there are two families from this past year that asked for that. Our program operations continue that any child with a family income below the poverty level is automatically eligible. And we use a federal level, which last year for a family of two was about sixteen thousand, and a family of four was about twenty-five thousand. So, that is the income eligible. And then, we also look at families who receive public assistance, children who are in the foster care system or who have homeless status. And then, we also are allowed to go above the poverty level if we have openings in the system. So, we still try to reserve some spaces for families that enter throughout the school year.
Sharon, can I ask you a question on that? Just out of curiosity, the individuals that are eligible as it relates to income, is that something that the families apply for? Is it something that we know automatically? How is that verified?
They have to bring verification of that through TANF or through any documentations that they have from the county.
And is that, is that application process done through the county or through the district?
The federal assistance is through the county, but then they have to bring verification. We have an eligibility checklist, and that's one of the options.
Thank you.
Sure. Currently, our Head Start program employs twenty-eight staff members. And if you remember, each classroom, we are required to have two adults in the classroom at each time. Some of that is due to hygiene issues and getting kids back and forth, brushing their teeth and going to the restroom. We had one hundred and seventy-one volunteers throughout the school year, and that included thirty parents. And some of our employees who work for the program also receive their, they receive their salary from Head Start. There are a couple of us that have salaries taken from multiple grants, including myself, Emily, Matt, and Christine Ringel from the fiscal team. So, we do have, two of our employees are Spanish-speaking, which is very helpful for our families in order to get the information to them. And that includes fourteen students who live in homes where this primary language is Spanish. And we also have a required behavior coach, and that's a coach that works on setting up systems within the classroom. In our K-12 system, it's called the PBIS system, I'm sure you've heard of. In the pre-K system, it's called the pyramid model. And we've had the pyramid model much longer than PBIS because we certainly need to teach social behaviors to our little kids. Our other section, child and family services, we have three ladies that work for the system, Head Start, and they track goals for the families. Last week, prior to starting school, all of our teachers are also required to make home visits. So, they meet with the families and they set family goals for the year related to the academics of their kids and if they need any supports from our community. The number of children with continued accessible dental care is much better. We have some new providers in the community that are willing to help our families out. So, every family met with the advocates. They create their goals, and then they process those throughout the school year, making sure that the families have the supports they need within their home environment. So, one of the things that we have done this past year is we have a program that was integrated at the YMCA, and we thank Rob for his great collaboration. So, within Head Start, those kids go to four-year-old kindergarten at the YMCA downtown. And one of the cool things is Rob made sure that they all had swimming lessons. So, on graduation day of swimming lessons, they're all sitting poolside in their little swimsuits and making sure that they have the same access to water safety as our other students. New for this year is previously, we had had a program in Hartford. It was placed at the Sycamore Tree, and Hartford's four-year-old kindergarten program has all been moved back to their school sites. So, they no longer had that opportunity at the Sycamore Tree. So, we have now moved our program to the Jackson Community Center, which, again, it's embedded with our four-year-old kindergarten program. So, we do have a bus from Hartford to Jackson to help support those same students. And then, we're also trying to expand our integrated programs, and Emily and Matt will continue that quest throughout the school year. So, any questions? It's all good stuff. I would just need the approval of accepting the PIR.
I just want to see a picture of them in their little swimsuits. All excited to swim.
I'll have Emily send that to you.
Just a quick comment. I had the opportunity to go to Y this morning, and as the new kids were coming in, they were so excited. Across the board, it was just an exciting morning to see the, whether they were 4K or Head Start, just a lot of enthusiastic parents as well as kids. A few of them had some tears, but for the most part, they were ready to go, and it was, it was a good morning.
Were those the parents who were crying?
Yeah.
I was that living word, and that was my, that was my duty, is make sure the parents, you know, leave in time, and they did a great job.
I saw a bunch of pictures Nancy posted this morning of kids coming in. It looked like a lot of fun. Before I make this motion, I want to make sure, is this the eighteen, nineteen Head Start or the nineteen?
Yes, it's all the data from last school year.
So, the motion should be eighteen, nineteen?
Correct.
Okay. I move to approve the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen Head Start program information report.
Second.
Any questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sharon. All right, we've got some fast-track policies tonight, and I'll quickly just remind everybody what a fast-track is. The policy committee reviewed these policies and made a little bit of a change, but not enough to affect the policy. In a nutshell, Chris?
Excellent, yes.
Okay. So, there's five of them here, and if you, if anybody would like to review them or look at them or discuss them, we certainly can. But the policy committee recommended we fast-track these because we maybe crossed out a word, changed some punctuation, but did not affect the policy. And here we are. And fast-track policies can be voted on during first reading. In order for them to pass, they need unanimous approval, but we do not have to have all board members here. So, we can vote on them and pass them tonight if we want to. If they don't pass, then they just move on to a second reading or maybe be recommended to go back to policy committee. So, did I explain that okay?
Very well. Are there any questions about any of the fast-track items?
So, I think just as a matter of background, as you had mentioned, the policy committee took a look at these, and these were all unanimously recommended by the policy committee.
I will move to approve fast-track recommendations for revised board policies. Three-ten, philosophy and educational goals. Three-eleven, performance objectives. Three-thirty, standards-aligned and goals-based curriculum development. Four-forty-three point four, student conduct, alcohol and drug use. And one-seventy-one point one, public notice of board meetings.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? None? And those policies pass. All right, Laura.
So, joining me tonight are Leah Duckert and Robert Mulbauer. Come on up. And our objective tonight is to give you some information about particularly one of the courses that we currently teach and a change that we're proposing and a new course that we're proposing. So, the order that they appear on the executive summary is physical science and then wind ensemble. And so, Robert worked this summer with a team of, come on up. With a team of physical science teachers to work on developing a course overview and what that might include. The work they did this summer was based on last couple of years of comments, of observations that the science committee had brought forward, that another group of science teachers, not necessarily those on the science committee, had asked to meet and discuss. And again, they fully invested their time in doing this and really feel that the physical science course is something that's currently lacking at our high schools. And so, if you have any questions, comments about the course, Robert was working with the full team this summer and, again, as a teacher at the high school, would speak to the impact for our students that this could have.
I have several. I'm sure you're surprised. So, will this be an elective course or will this be required? First question, and then I'll hit you with the rest.
Elective.
And then, what grade will they be allowed to? Actually, maybe go back. Could you, for all of us sitting here and those listening at home, give us the high school? I'm a freshman. What do I take for science?
Currently, you are taking biology for science.
And sophomore?
Sophomore, currently you're taking chemistry.
Junior?
Currently, you're taking physics.
Senior?
Whatever you want.
So, you're not required seniors, three years? Okay. So, how does this fit in with that, then?
So, it, it would give students another pathway. What, and I cannot recall the meeting, but we'll bring forward graduation requirements at a future meeting as we're going through the policies. And I would propose that we retain the three science courses, but we do not require every student to take an advanced science course. Currently, that's the wording in our polit, in our board policy, that we require biology and chemistry plus another advanced. So, beyond that, this would give students another pathway that they could take a course that has some foundational science concepts to it, but is not necessarily as rigorous as physics.
So, while this is an elective, it would count toward the science requirement for graduation? Okay. So, they, it's more choice? Okay.
So, you envision, this is probably a teacher, or a teacher question more than a Laura question. Do you envision freshmen wanting to take this? Or do you see this more as like a junior, senior kind of time that they'd be taking?
Yeah, I would say that I envision a certain group of freshmen coming in to take this before they take biology and then chemistry.
Okay. So, then they would, then they could just take, it would kind of be a resequence then for them. So, then they would take biology sophomore year would be the normal, and then junior year, chemistry.
In the past, that's, a long time ago, that's what the curriculum was.
Yeah, like a hundred years ago when I went to school, that's how it was? So, okay, those are mine.
Laura, do you anticipate any scheduling issues when you have more options for, for students? I mean, will that be an issue as to how kids are going to get into? You know, right now, ninety percent or a hundred percent of the kids take biology as ninth graders. And so, now they're going to take biology and physical science, or physical science. And then, as a sophomore, would it be, you think it would be easier for the physical science to be at a sophomore level? Because it would seem like that would be maybe more in line with chemistry than biology or not? I, I'm just, seems like biology is a life science. Physical science is part of the, I mean, it ties in more with, with chemistry than with biology. But that's a non-science person speaking.
So, with physical science as part of the course they would be getting, you know, well, some content that frankly, I don't think we really cover right now, which is like about a third of the standards that we adopted last year, Earth and Space. We would hit up a little bit of that, especially since they're coming off of that in, in eighth grade. But not, certainly, they're not getting the high school standards in, in eighth grade for, for the earth science standards. And so, we would, there'd be a component for that. And then, the idea is it would go into a portion that is geared towards prepping them for chemistry later and also a small portion that is geared towards trying to cover some of those physics standards that those students might not make it all the way to that physics course. And so, when we actually assess them later, we want to make sure that we're trying to cover some of those. So, I guess to try to address the sequencing, I can see where you're coming from, where you think maybe it would be possible after biology. But at least from my perspective, I view it as a, a better transition from where they're coming from in eighth grade to give them a foundation when they get to the high school, covering some stuff that they have learned, but in more depth at the very beginning of that course.
We do not have the intention to restrict that and say you cannot take it beyond freshman year.
Oh, okay, that was going to be my next question. So, if physics just gives me the hives, just the word, I could take this junior year. If I wanted to.
Okay, I love physics. I was just, I'm going to, I'm going to speak as a science person right now.
She's an engineer, and no, that, some of us are computer and math and science people, but not all.
I think this is fantastic because I can actually, I love that you touch on the geological science and the introduction to physics. So, for kids that won't go on to physics, they'll still get the introduction to it. And who knows, maybe they'll go on to take physics their senior year because you've instilled in them a love of science. So, I'm really excited about this. And I also like that it gives students a choice. And as we see, unfortunately, I spoke with someone today who told me they're thinking about choicing out to Kowaskam. And as we see, unfortunately, I spoke with someone today who told me they're thinking about choicing out to Kewaskom. And I just really like that we can offer something that other districts can't. So let's take advantage of our large school in that way. Thank you.
Laura, I'm going to ask a question and I'm sure I'm going to use the wrong words, but not that long ago, we as a board looked at, in fact, I think you touched on this a little bit, the standards or new standards, new curriculum, something that the state came out with if I remember right? Okay. And is that through eighth grade or did those standards go all the way through high school?
So the standards go all the way through high school, but they are in bands. So one of the bands ends at eighth grade and then the next one is nine through twelve. And it's just called the high school standards. So when you look at the course overview document, it'll say HS and then the coding and that's the coding for the state standard that is related and they're all high school level.
Okay. And I presume this almost goes without asking, but I'll ask it anyway, that what's being proposed here would be compliant with those standards?
Correct.
Thanks.
Laura, am I correct in biology is a state requirement for science? And biology is the only requirement? Three classes are required, but chemistry is a West Bend requirement, but not a state requirement?
Correct.
Is that correct?
As is, physics is also a West Bend.
That's right. Three are required by the state, but the state only identifies biology as the only class that you have to take. You do have, if I'm correct, the district does have flexibility to do other type of science classes if you chose to do it, but you have to take biology and you have to have three.
Correct.
So then this change would go into effect for next school year? Is that the plan?
Yes. And approving, so we would intend to come back with a recommended motion to approve this at our next board opportunity. And then that gives us time to put it in the course planning guide so students can look that over for next year.
Great questions. Any more?
Sounds good.
Cool. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Robert, appreciate it. Leah, come on up. Okay, Leah is here for the wind ensemble program class. Currently it's a class and kind of an extension of our symphonic band. However, the wind ensemble class is at a level that, where students are utilizing college-level music and complex finger positions, complex use of all the musical terms, which I have to look at my notes to read, so.
But you're right.
So it is at this really high level of rigor. It is truly an advanced course. And, but the students don't receive that designation as an honors level currently. And within our board policy right now, course changes are approved by the board. This is kind of a significant change to take it from regular to honors. And so we're bringing it forward to you at this time. So you can ask questions and the next time would ask for a motion to approve that. Leah's here to also talk very much about.
I do have questions right away, I'm sure you're shocked.
Go ahead Nancy, you start.
So first, I would like to commend you. I thought that the drum line was amazing on the first day and I think you do such a good job with the music department, so thank you.
Thank you.
But my questions are, how many kids currently are involved in this class? Before it becomes an honors class?
Sure. So the symphonic band is all tenth, eleventh and twelfth graders. So they all sort of filter into the class called symphonic band.
Okay.
Symphonic band functions as the marching band first and fourth quarter. And then second and third quarters, it functions as a concert season band. Like if you go to a concert in the park, that's kind of what they do second and third quarters. So given our numbers right now, I would say that we have anywhere between, I don't know, probably on average forty to forty-five in the wind ensemble and then everyone else gets filtered into symphonic band. So you can do the math because I don't think I want to. We have about a hundred and ten enrolled in symphonic band right now.
Okay. So you envision this would increase the enrollment, decrease or just kind of just stay the same? It's just more of a opportunity for them to say it's an honors course?
Sure. I don't think it'll affect enrollment. What I do think is that for the kids who audition into wind ensemble, it's going to give me an opportunity to do a lot of more rigorous instruction because right now technically, the wind ensemble students and the symphonic band students are under the same umbrella. So I could potentially see where the wind ensemble students are saying, well, why should I work extra when the symphonic band kids aren't? And it's, you know, this way I can do a whole lot more rigor. I can do a flipped classroom, I can do a listening lab. Like there's so much more I can do if I can say, well, yeah, but you get that cool little honors delineation, you know?
Okay.
So.
Great. That's all I have, thank you.
Nancy, I had several teachers ask me if we could have the drum line halfway through my presentation just to kind of wake people up. And so they all appreciated the drum line, but they said, Don, we think it would be a lot better if you did it halfway through yours just to put a little bippin' vigor in it, so.
I do have one more thing. I also wanted to once again recognize that we have students who are playing in the UW band.
Sure do.
And they were your students, all of them?
Yes, all of them.
So once again, congratulations.
Very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Laura, remind me, is there a requirement or an encouragement that all high school students take in honors class?
There is an encouragement.
Okay.
Not a requirement.
Okay. And this obviously would qualify?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that one door that this opens for our students is students who, people are familiar with Juilliard. Not everybody, except those really versed in the music community are as familiar with Cincinnati's University of Music.
Outstanding.
And in the music world, it is recognized. Like you go there and wow, doors have opened for you. Much like commonplace, we've heard about Juilliard. So we did contact them in regards to this and it would, talking with them about currently how we're transcripting and if we make the shift, how we're transcripting and does that matter? And while most of their admissions is based on that audition, the transcript review is still a part of that.
Remind me again what an honors course really means? I mean, it's on your transcript? Do you get a higher GPA score out of that? Is it college credit? What all does it mean?
So currently, we do not, we currently do not have any GPA weighting for our honors courses. And so no, as far as that goes. If this, when, if I'm looking at two students that I'm admitting to UW Madison for, and they are music majors and I have one who has been in marching band all four years and one who's had these honors bands, everything else equal, I'm probably looking to that one. That's also a conversation I had with Madison at one point about is there a time when this makes a difference?
On our transcripts, do our honors courses have asterisks next to them that clearly shows that this was an honors course?
Not sure right now.
We'll have to look at that.
Yep.
And I guess, the reason for my question is, should we be calling this honors band versus honors, versus wind ensemble?
Wind ensemble, I think matters.
Yeah, wind ensemble in the music world delineates a higher level to begin with.
Okay.
If you talk to a musician and you say, oh, student A is in symphonic band or student B is in concert band or student C is in wind ensemble, as soon as you say the words wind ensemble, other musicians will be like, ooh, okay.
I think that's just like their language.
Gotcha.
Right. Yeah, we're kind of weird like that.
Or everybody's weird.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Specialized, we're highly specialized, aren't we?
Do you, looking forward to auditions? Well, you're doing auditions now for it, it's just not an honors course now. But is it based on the instrument? Is it based on, I mean, if you got ten great trumpet players, but the wind ensemble only needs three, is that kind of how it works?
Yeah, so there is an instrumentation issue just to keep it balanced. So we take about seven flute, oh, I think I just, yep, five flute players. We take about six clarinet players, about six trumpets, one tenor sax, one baritone sax, sometimes two altos, sometimes four altos. So as long as the instrumentation stays balanced, that's good. It's not always the same number every year depending on what the audition scores pan out to be.
Cool. We did this in my high school when I was in high school back in nineteen ninety-seven and I'm just, it's kind of crazy to me that we haven't done this years ago, to be honest with you. But I'm glad, glad to see it happening now, so.
I support this change. So the answer to this question will not affect my decision, but just out of curiosity. This is wind ensemble. Do students who wish to concentrate on, let's say, a stringed instrument, do they have a similar option?
So within our music program, we do have different levels as well. We have not yet brought that one forward or had the discussion. It emerged very organically from the expressions of students and probably, I'm going to bet that some of those students that you were referring to would have loved this opportunity.
Absolutely, yeah.
And when I, for others who are not visually here, I meant the students who are now in the marching band at UW Madison.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Yeah.
Maybe we'll come back with that as well.
That's a great idea.
And following on to Chris's question, same thing for the choral side.
Sure.
Do we, do we have something, could we envision a similar offering in that regard?
In the future, you could envision that, coming forward for another, at another meeting.
Okay, thank you.
As we've talked about honors courses in the past, I've been, I was always a big advocate, they need to be hard classes.
Oh, yes.
And I would assume this will be a hard class and.
You would say this already.
I have very high expectations.
Yes. And so do we, to designate this as an honors course?
No, absolutely, no, for sure, which I appreciate. Already we are doing, if you look on your sheet, it talks about the different grade, the different grades of music. Grade one doesn't mean six-year-olds. It means like, that's the beginning band music. And grade six doesn't mean, you know, the kids just leaving Silverbrook. It means like, we're talking the highest level of music that you will play as an adult or anywhere else. We consistently do grade five and six, occasionally grade four in the start of the season. And we consistently go to Wisconsin School Music Association Band Festival and earn first place every year. So the rigor is there, I just want to make it more. So, yeah.
Cool.
Yeah.
Very good. Any more questions? I know Leah a little bit and I'm sure she was really excited to come to this board meeting tonight to talk about this.
I was. I was super excited.
Thank you for being here Leah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Cool.
Thank you.
We'll see, we'll see both these classes at our next board meeting.
Perfect.
Cool. Thank you. Chris, I'm going to turn the next one over to you and Laura. This was a policy that we did change a little bit. Do you want to click on it or maybe just tell us? This is, it has to do with our days and hours and after all the snow days that our new superintendent called last year, we had to do something about it. No, I'm kidding.
So this policy is specific about, specific to the development of the school calendar. And, sorry, I'm flipping through to get to the right one. The, it's, we have two policies that talk about, one talks about the school calendar and one talks about the hours of instruction. At the Policy Committee, we reviewed both of those policies and we're first bringing forward the revision to the annual, to Policy three twenty-one. It would shift from, if the revision is accepted, from the school year calendar to the annual school year calendar and days, days and hours of instruction. So it combines those two policies into one and then it just addresses how the superintendent will lead out the development of the calendar and then the presentation of that to the board. It does provide, say, that once approved by the board, we will hesitate to change a calendar, but it does not guarantee that there won't be changes. We'll hesitate to do that, but if we need to, we would come back to the board.
And this is our first reading tonight, so we won't vote on this. But if there are any questions, suggestions, anything like that, now's the time. And if there are none, then we'll bring it back for our second reading at our next meeting. But.
I think just to clarify, so the other Policy three twenty-two would be considered obsolete if we move forward with this? But that, I think, Deb, you and I were talking, that requires two readings. So that's why it's not at this meeting, but we will see both of them then at next meeting if we move forward.
Any other comments or questions? Nope. Thank you Laura.
Thank you.
And Chris, Policy Committee report from last two weeks ago.
Well, we pretty much plowed through almost all of the Policy Committee's work. So we did meet on Monday, August twenty-sixth at four thirty PM. We looked at eight policies. If I did my math, six of them, we talked about tonight previously, so I won't repeat. The seventh is Board Policy three twenty-two, which would become obsolete. We'll see that next time. The other is we reviewed Board Policy three twenty-three point two, flag and accompanying action, and the committee recommended no changes. That concludes my report.
Well, thank you very much. Superintendent Curricar.
Just a couple of quick comments. First of all, I'm working with Sharon and the principals. We're going to try to bring in some people in the really immediate future to talk to our students about vaping as far as the issues that are happening. Obviously, there's been a lot in the news lately. Not designed to be an in-service, it just tells them all the evils of vaping, but just really more of an informative, seeing what guys, we're finding out a lot of information that we didn't know before and it truly is a health issue. And so we're going to try to have some vaping expertise at our schools in the real immediate future. Sharon talked a little bit about 4K, it started today as well as Head Start. As of today, we have four hundred and ten students enrolled either in 4K and/or Head Start. And so that number is up a little bit from last year, but pretty stable to where it was last year. I'm going to go to Jackson Village meeting tomorrow just to kind of give them an update on the, where we're at in the district and not talk about anything other than just the state of the district. One of the questions that I asked Joel a little bit, I wanted some input from you on October fourteenth, when the Citizens Advisory Committee is going to present to us, my thought is that we would have the board sit right here, just like you are right now. We'd eliminate the podium, put a table or two because I think it'll be more than just one person presenting at a time. And so they'll have three or four maybe at the table. And the first one gives one presentation and the next one, both from there, will have it set up. It's not, I'm suggesting it's not designed to be a community interactive discussion. It really is, the Citizens Advisory Committee is going to present to you. At the end of the presentation, you certainly can ask any questions you would like. If not, we'll probably at some point in time, whether it's at another committee of the whole or a special board meeting, have a meeting to digest what was presented to us. But, but for the meeting, we would set up, just like we are with a table in front to present to you and we would keep the other comments out of this particular meeting. It really is their presentation to you and at the end, you would, you would ask questions if you had some. Does that seem like a possible solution?
I would prefer to digest what they have to say rather than having public commentary. So I would really like, you know, that it just be the advisory committee speaking to the board and certainly welcome anyone to listen, but I would prefer not to have public commentary at that meeting if at all possible.
I think that's very appropriate. I don't think there should be anything other than, and it is a committee of the whole. And so the committee of the whole, we don't necessarily ask for public input. That's strictly at board meetings. And so I think if you have specific questions, I think you should be able to ask them that night. But other than that, you're just getting their information.
And I would like to have, like Nancy, a month to digest. You know, we'll certainly ask clarifying questions the night of, but really dig in over the course of the next month. And if we could have, you know, at least the leads of the task force, if not the entire task force back, maybe in mid-November to dig into the detail that we've uncovered. What's going to be interesting is I don't think any of us really know what they're going to say, but what they told us was they're going to come back with just some findings. And obviously, they could say something that we really disagree with or maybe we think we know more about than they do. I personally don't think that's going to be the time to tell them that they're dumb and that they're totally wrong and throw it out the window, tear it up. But I'd really, I'd like to really see the board just listen, maybe ask some clarifying questions, but really not even have us get into a debate or whatever. And if that's, I hope that's the way that goes. Obviously, you're all welcome to do what you want. But I do appreciate the time this task force is taking to do this. It's, by the time they come next month, it's going to be like four or five months of their work doing this. And so I'm really curious to hear what they have to say. And then like Paul said, maybe we come back as just a board, maybe we come back with some of them, who knows? We'll digest that after that night, but. So Don, the other, the only last thing and maybe we're. All right, so I, Don, the other, the only last thing, and maybe work with Tim, I don't know if they're gonna have slides, or if they're gonna have pictures. I don't know if they want to print off slides, or put them on our computers, or we'll figure that out, but sometimes looking way over there is kind of.
We'll, we'll figure that out.
Too far, but we'll figure it out.
Joel talked earlier about, our longtime teacher at McLean passed away, there's gonna be a celebration of her life on Sunday, in which they're asking the people who, if they would like to, rather than a memorial, to bring a backpack full of supplies for kids. And so each of the schools, we're collecting, we're doing some backpack work, and so we're gonna give them to Andy, and he's gonna present backpacks on behalf of all the schools, but if anybody else would like to do a backpack, that's gonna be on Sunday. And the last thing I had is that last Tuesday, we had the first issue of the highlighter. The highlighter is the opportunity for the district to give information to the teachers, we'll do it every other week, and it really is, I know that both Lenny and Jennifer have been working hard on it, as well as Nancy and several others, and it just is an opportunity to, to try to do a better job of providing quality information to the faculty as quickly and timely as we can. And so that went out last Tuesday, last Thursday, and it will go out every other week, so, thank you.
I saw the highlighter, I thought it looked great, and I, also Nancy Kunkler, it seems like you've been posting a ton of pictures and activities as school starts. I always think that's great for Facebook and Twitter and all of that, so, you know, thank you for doing that. On our board calendar, we've got the September twenty-third annual meeting. Registration starts at six, budget hearing at six thirty, and the annual meeting at seven. We've got a policy committee meeting scheduled for four o'clock on the third, and if that, something changes with that, we'll certainly send out a note to everybody, but we've got that scheduled on the third. And then the fourteenth is our committee of the whole meeting, which we just talked about right here at five thirty. And then a regular board meeting in October, and another one in November. Any questions on the schedule? The last thing I'll ask the board members, in the past, we've kind of done a school board liaison program, where we've each assigned kind of each other, or assigned a school to our, our board. Is that something we want to do again this year? Paul, do you know what I'm talking about? Okay, no, that's okay. So in the, like, like we, we may say, you know, Paul, you've got Green Tree and Badger, and all we kind of ask you to do is maybe just connect with the principal and say, hey, I'm assigned as your liaison, and it's not to go hear employee complaints or parent issues, it's strictly for fun. And if Badger's having a pep rally, maybe call up Paul and invite Paul. If, if Green Tree's doing a walk your kid to school day, call up Paul and invite him to that, and so that, it's just a way to get the board out into the community and, and attending some, kind of those cool events that happen with our district. You can have as much activity and fun with that as you want, or if you don't want to do anything with it, that's okay too. There's no requirement that you gotta attend things or whatever, so that was kind of something we've done in the past. Obviously, there's seven of us, and there's more schools than that, so some board members have two schools assigned to them, so. If heads are shaking, if that's something.
I think it's been a good program, so.
Do you have any preference on what schools, or?
I'll take east, I, since my daughter's there, I'm there anyway.
Yeah.
I'll take west, I have two there.
Very typical that we'll do that, because if you're going to activities at east and at west, then that obviously makes a ton of sense as well. So I will send out an email on that, and I'll just kind of assign the schools, I'll look at what you guys had last year, and if you're cool with keeping those, or if you feel strongly otherwise, text me or call me or let me know, and we'll continue that. I think that's kind of a neat deal, so. And Don can help us with the principals, just kind of giving them a heads up on what that is. Also, homecoming is not far away, October fourth, east versus west, it typically is, that homecoming week. And in the past, we have been in the homecoming parade, and wanted to see if board members want to do that again. We typically walk behind Superintendent Kirkagard, who's got the drum line, no, the drum line behind him, no. But we'll, we'll kind of, we typically all walk together as a board, and, and behind Superintendent Kirkagard, throw out candy and just, you know, kiss babies and shake hands and all that kind of good stuff. So is that something you guys would like to do again? Okay, great, we'll let them know that, and it's on October fourth, Friday at four o'clock. I don't know what that means. Oh, yeah.
I usually do just.
I won't be here, is what Toni's telling me. She, she knows that I'm gonna be out of town that day, so I won't be here for the homecoming parade. That's my wife's birthday weekend, and I'm taking her on a trip, and so I won't be here.
We'll celebrate without you.
Yeah, good, you guys can do homecoming.
I usually will grab the candy for everyone, that is, school board, ourselves, we pay for that, so it's usually just twenty bucks a person, and I'll just grab the candy, and then we have had buckets in the past, but now that Joel won't be here, somebody better eat a lot of ice cream or something.
I'll see if I can find the buckets. We'll be all right. Good, thanks for doing that. I'll send a note out to everybody reminding you of that. Typically for that, just wear east colors, west colors, if you got an old homecoming T-shirt. If you want a homecoming T-shirt, maybe ask Deb to order you one, those are kind of cool too, so.
I think we still have extras, don't we? There's, it actually has east and west on there, so you.
If you don't have one of those, Paul, you should get one of those.
Celebrating one. Maybe I'll wear my west, and we could really walk next to each other.
Anything else for the good of the order here? If not, I'll motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, we're adjourned. Thank you. Have a good rest of the week.